Like to call to session this Public Work Action Meeting of the Mawa Board of Education for June 26, 2019.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. Kaczmarewski. Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Dr. Morthe.
Here.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
And Ms. Baron.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Records specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on June 26, 2019 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Could everyone please rise for a salute to the flag? Uh, Dr. Morthe, would you like to lead us?
Sure. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to recess to executive session? Ms. Conoco, second by Dr. Morthe. May I have a motion to reconvene, um, Mr. Ziccone, followed by Mr. Wenderkowitz? Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question.
Motion to open.
May I have a motion to open this section to the public?
Did you want to say something?
Mr. De Silva, second by-
You have a hand up there.
We just need to motion go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we needed to take a raise.
We're not, we're not closing it. Just have a little bit more of that copy.
I'm there. These are what I've been living on all week.
Okay. If you have any agenda questions, you are free to come up to the microphone.
I'm sorry, I'm still leaving.
Welcome to the party. You're not alone.
Good to know. Laura Ferinski, 51 Malcolm Road. Um, I sent an email to all of you this week about my thoughts and concerns about the playground. Um, to me, it seems pretty simple. The certified playground mulch, the safe wood chips seem to be the safest and most cost-effective answer, so I just ask you to think about it before you vote. I'm sure you already have your decisions, so I'm sorry if I'm wasting your time, but, um, I just wanted to point out that some districts and states are banning the tires as well as the port in place and the artificial turf. And just think about it before you vote, what you want. Your children to have land, you want them to be safe. I hate to have to send my children to a different school because the Mawa schools are great. I live right across the street. I don't want to have to pay to send them somewhere else over a silly issue like the playground. I just want them to be safe. I don't want them to get cancer or anything else bad like that. Um, tires are good for the cars, but not for the playgrounds. Please protect the children and do the right thing, and don't put something there that's worse than what's already there. Please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to reiterate, um, a few things, and one of them is that I appreciate you listening to, you know, some of the parents.
I just have to, I'm sorry, but I didn't stop the first moment of speaking. We don't have anything on our agenda regarding the playgrounds this evening.
Oh, because we were told, um, from multiple-
There will be a report later.
That there was a, that there will be an announcement in June.
Right. We're gonna have a committee report tonight, but there's, we're not voting on anything tonight.
Okay, because we were actually really anxious to see what the vote would look like and-
It's not something that'll be voted on. It's, Mike will give a, a committee report in a couple of minutes. Right.
Okay, and then in that report, you'll say what you decided, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you can speak.
All right, let's do that. Kind of like a, kind of like an evening rebuttal. All right.
It's just on an agenda item.
All right, cool. Thank you.
It's a committee report.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I'm very sorry about that. It was my fault, too.
No, no, that's okay. We were told June, so we were all checking our calendars. June.
It will be.
Any, any agenda questions on items on the agenda?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Can we hear you now?
Yeah. Okay. David May, 93 Owie No Road, also Council of Mawa, Council President. Uh, just wanted to congratulate everyone on a successful year, which I think was successful, um, and for, for having me in your audience every meeting, um, as the liaison for the council, and, uh, just wanted to wish everyone a happy summer, and, uh, just wanted to say that the culmination of the school year, which with the ceremonies last week, I, I made it to a couple of them. Uh, they were terrific, and, you know, I just wanted to congratulate everybody.
Thank you very much.
I can, I do have to leave early, so I might not be here for the whole meeting, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, may I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Um, Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Gallo. Thank you. Um, Dr. Shoen, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do, I do. I have two things, um, this evening. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump on to, uh, to Mr. May's comments. It really was an exceptional year. You're absolutely right, and thank you for, for coming to our meetings and, and being part of our promotion and graduation exercises. Um, you and the council being part of, of the high school one, um, has been something that's gone on for a while, and I think that that's real important, um, for us. It has been an amazing year because we have an amazing staff, um, that dedicate many, many hours far beyond the school day, um, to us. And as a culminating activity for the last two years, we have, um, engaged the very thoughtful and generous community, um, in, in donating, uh, both food and, and prizes and entertainment. Um, even our, our food service company, um, cooks all of the food for us, and it's, it's not things that we are charged for. That took place on June 24th. Um, Dennis Fair has been instrumental, um, in starting that with us two years ago, and it continuing this year was another, um, really, really great success. When you are leaving this evening, if you haven't already, I know the board is familiar, but there is a sign outside that refers to all of the companies, um, and restaurants and places that have donated, um, all sorts of things to us. We will be putting out a press release shortly that will thank all of our people that have donated, as well as a couple of pictures, but it's on an easel on the left-hand side. So, I wanted to say that that was a, a really great culminating event to, to an awesome year. Uh, the board was there helping, Mawa School Foundation representatives, HSO presidents, um, everyone in, in shirts designating who they were. Uh, the teachers had shirts and hats, and our new hires were, were here. They're gonna think Mawa is just one big party.
Yes.
Um, but it, it really is amazing. I don't think I've ever heard of any district that, that wants to come out and support their staff in the way in which, um, we do it, um, and they so richly deserve it, so I just wanted to comment on that. Um, the second is, and I, I know you all know this, but if you haven't, I'm just gonna remind you, uh, that June is National Safety Month, and in light of the fact that it is National Safety Month according to the New Jersey Department of Ed, I'd like to give a school security update, um, and I think that's important to do at the end of the year. Um, so, a, a couple of things, and I work with, with Dr. Dittoro on this. As you know, he is our school safety specialist, and he worked very closely, um, with Chief Jaffe, um, in developing an assessment report, security assessment report of all of our buildings, and within that report, there were a number of recommendations. In reviewing all of the recommendations that were in his report, as well as retired Chief Batelli did a report for us with recommendations as well, um, both Dr. Dittoro and I are proud to let you know that the majority of those things, if not all, will be completed during the 1920 year, many of which were completed, um, this year. Um, we had bollards installed, uh, that'll continue at more buildings. We certainly had them at the ridge. We have some ordered for the high school, for Betsy Ross, um, for JK, in those areas where cars are making those critical turns. We have vehicle restraints that are being put in. JK just had one put in. That's cutting off the area for a vehicle in front of a playground. Uh, there's one there. We've done upgrade to our alarm systems at all of our buildings. We've had interior and exterior blue lights installed. Those are the emergency lights. If there's an emergency situation, both our staff and students have been trained as to what to do, um, if that light goes on and what that means. Um, it's, they have also been installed on our steam building as well, external and internal. Um, we added additional cameras, and we're gonna continue with more cameras, um, and we're also working on security vestibules. I believe it was at our last board meeting, we had a, a recommendation and an approval by the board, um, to not only divide the security vestibules that we have in each of the buildings currently, um, with a, um-
Divider.
Thank you, thank you. With a divider so that visitors, um, are on a, on a separate side, uh, but we also approved a recommendation at our last board meeting to have security vestibules placed in the three buildings that currently do not have them. So that would be GW, that would be Betsy Ross, and that would be Ramapo Ridge. They're a little bit more difficult, as we've discussed, because they don't have that double door entry system already, door, area door, so they have to be built and they have to be designed, and they have been by our architect with review of our facilities committee, so that we maintain the integrity of each of the buildings as they are, and we don't change the front of Betsy Ross or the front of GW, so it's been designed. So our hope, um, is to begin that work this summer, but we're gonna work closely with the architect, um, and C.R. Construction, who was given that, um, awarded that for, for his bid. As to when we're going to do that, because we don't want it necessarily to conflict with the beginning part of the school year, um, what I can say is, is that I don't at all anticipate that all three of those areas will be done by the beginning of September. Uh, there may even be a delay until after back-to-school night so that the kids get in and it's a clean opening, and then we can end up with some construction. It's one thing if construction is done outside or separate and apart, like our steam addition is concerned. It's another thing when it's done in the school with the kids and the entrance, and they're also in a school with smaller children. So we need to be cognizant and sensitive to that. But I want to thank Dr. Dittoro, who's been an awesome school security specialist, as well as our director, um, this year and has worked very closely. I want to thank Chief Jaffe, um, for his, his ability to be an expert in this field. Um, he will continue to be our resource moving forward. Um, there are also additional security pieces that we have put into place that I wouldn't be comfortable reporting publicly, but I know the board is aware of it, and I just wanted you to know that, um, safety remains paramount and important to us all the time. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bleeker, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, um, just two reports on two of the, um, construction projects that we currently have going. Uh, the steam addition across the way, of course, as well as the, uh, library windows at the high school, that replacement. For the steam division, uh, addition, I want to report that significant progress has been made on the addition as we are in the last phases of construction. Final inspections are coming in, are planned for shortly. We had one today where we got the final inspection sticker for it. We have another planned for tomorrow and some next week. Uh, the base go for the parking lot was poured today, and we're finishing touches are being made on the interior. A lot of the appliances and things like that that are, um, affixed to the wall or fixed to the structure are being put in place, and, uh, we're very excited that when the last and final inspections do come in, to begin the final move-in, um, of any equipment and furniture for the, um, opening in September. Uh, as far as the MHS library windows, just a very small report because it began earlier this week. Um, they have, it has begun. They are taking down the windows section by section, and one section comes down, another section will be going up. Um, if anybody that noticed it on the way in, they did take down the first two sections today, and they're in the progress, uh, right now. Uh, they were just out there working about an hour ago when we were still out there, um, to button that up before they leave for the day. So we are, um, that proj- project is going along very well so far, and, uh, looking forward to that being completed as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fararity, have anything for us this evening?
Uh, sure. Just a brief thank you to the board. Um, I know that the, uh, the barbecue, uh, was a really successful event. I, I know that it took a lot of people, um, to make the event so special, but, um, your support, I think, um, Callie Triantaphilakis, um, in, um, what she shared to the staff, um, you know, she said, "These types of things don't happen in many districts, and, uh, we really appreciate your support in allowing us to, uh, sometimes think outside the box." Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Uh, I do not have a report for this evening, other than to say, um, I hope everyone enjoys their summer, and we had fabulous school year, and looking forward to next year. Agreed. Um, there were any board committee reports this evening?
Got one for, uh, policy. You'll see seventeen CC and DD. We have fifteen, uh, policies for first reading tonight and thirty-eight for second and adoption. Yep. We're almost there. So, we're getting there.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Gallo.
Policy committee is amazing.
As promised, the Finance and Facilities Committee, uh, working with the business office and the Buildings and Grounds Department, has prepared a recommendation on how we will renovate the playground surfaces at Betsy Ross, Joyce Kilmer, and George Washington Schools. The playgrounds at these three schools are all over twenty years old, and the playground surfaces are in need of improvement. The playground devices themselves still have about ten years of useful life left. We considered a variety of options, researched the issues raised by parents, and determined the district's regulatory obligations in consultation with our environmental attorney and other experts, and have come to a recommendation that we believe will serve our students for many, many years. The solution we are recommending retains the current rubber mulch as the base for a compacted hardwood play surface, so the top layer will be hardwood chips. This solution retains the excellent impact attenuation properties of the rubber material while upgrading the actual play surface to an environmentally friendly, aesthetically pleasing, clean, and importantly, ADA compliant surface. This solution also retains the flexibility to update and reconfigure the space as playground devices age and need to be replaced. The scope of work also includes repairing the playground borders at George Washington and Joyce Kilmer. These are the borders that hold in the material as needed, and installing an ADA compliant border at Betsy Ross. We, uh, we need to work out some additional details in terms of project schedule and cost, but we anticipate that all three playgrounds will be renovated by the fall at a cost between fifty and seventy thousand dollars. That is our report on the playgrounds. And I just want to, um, thank Dr. Shoen and, um, John Pascal for giving us a tour of the high school prior to today's meeting. We, we toured the, uh, library, the, um, stage area, the auditorium, and, um, the current music room, so we're getting a sense of what the facility needs may arise at the high school.
Thank you very much for that report. Have any other reports for this evening? Bye, Mr. May. Thank you. Bye. Uh, do you have any board member additional remarks or comments? Yes, Mr. Wenderkowitz.
I also want to add to what's been said about that, uh, picnic we had. I was impressed with the teachers, all the teachers who's, who had a high morale, and when, when a few of the teachers got up and the retirees got up, they were standing always from kindergarten right through twelfth grade. Some of them didn't know who they were, but they still appreciated the work they had done. I was, I was impressed with pum- 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 pum-tonium and the work they did. The poor fellow worked that grill in the sun. He kept popping out those, uh, hamburgers. I had never seen a hundred hot dogs go into an oven at one time, and, um, I was also impressed with the Emmett, um, Mawa School Foundation members there. Besides giving, awarding us thirty-five thousand dollars in, in mini grants, they were right there in the thick of thins, uh, thick of thin things, handing out hot dogs and hamburgs to everyone. I appreciate that. The biggest thrill was, I had a, my granddaughter had a softball game that evening, four hours from the, when the party ended. You couldn't tell that there had been over five hundred people walking around the ground. They had done, the maintenance men had done such a great job in cleaning the area. They really deserved a heartfelt thank you. They did an excellent job. Um, that's all I have to say.
That was well said, Peter. They really did an amazing job.
It just said, kind of echo everybody's sentiments. I mean, eighth grade, eighth grade promotion was, Mr. Corey did a great job, as usual. I mean, that was, that was a, a, a really nice event. Uh, high school graduation, as always, you know, went off, went off without a hitch. You know, just, he went about an hour and five minutes, so it went a little long. Went a little long.
Mr. Jankowski.
He, Mr. Jankowski did an, an awesome job. Um, and yeah, I mean, the barbecue, what a, what a way to end the year for, you know, teachers and, and, you know, the community to participate, um, and just-
Signing of the contract.
And what I was gonna say, you know, we, we signed the contract, we, uh, we honored, uh, or I say we, they, you know, the honorees were, were honored, and everybody just had a great time. It seemed that way.
We did that. We honored each other.
Yeah. I would've liked to see more people in the bouncy house. Maybe next year. We'll see how that goes.
Amazing.
Call it whatever makes you feel good. It was a bouncy house.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, to have our retirees and the new staff there was really close to the whole circle.
Yeah, well, what a, what a way for, you know, for brand-new people, like, to, to be the first exposure to where, yeah, to where, to where they were gonna be working next year and, and really kind of kick their career here off on the right note and, and just, you know, I, I, I would be super excited.
I ain't giving the words of wisdom saying, "If you don't know something, ask. Don't be afraid to ask. These people are very good. They'll help you out."
They really will.
Yeah, the vibe I had was that they're coming into a community of educators where everybody supports each other, that they're not getting into this line of work all by themselves, only a person on the oar. There's a whole team of people with great depth of experience and passion for our students that are there to help them and grow into this career of being educators.
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to offer congratulations to, uh, the graduating seniors, um, and, um, also just speak that the project graduation that was held after was also very successful. Um, I really also just, for me, personal level, thank, um, all the teachers, administrators, everyone. I mean, a fantastic district, and my children are, have been very blessed. I also wanted to just say thanks to all the many, many volunteers, because every event, whether it's the barbecue, whether it's everything that happens at the schools, uh, truly, it's a, it's a great school community, and I've worked with some wonderful people over the years, uh, who volunteer their time, and really, we're, we should be very grateful to all the people who kind of the, the pieces in the, in the wheel. Uh, but again, great year. Thanks so much.
Yes.
I just wanted to thank, um, Mike and the rest of the Facilities Committee for putting a really thorough review of the playgrounds. Playground have been something that's been talked about for a while now, and I think that the solution that we came up with, or the committees come up with, sounds pretty good. The only thing I, I'd like to ask, if you could elaborate a little bit more, I think there, there may be some questions out there about what it's gonna look like with the existing rubber mulch still being there with, being topped off of with wood mulch. If you could maybe just elaborate a little more on that.
Certainly. So, the way that the rubber mulch currently just is sits there, it's completely loose. The only thing that's sort of holding it in place are the borders. So a textile, a geotextile fabric will go around the rubber mulch, sort of tightening it up like a pillow, and, uh, wood chips will be placed on, I think, six to eight inches, I think it was. It's placed on top of the rubber mulch and gets compacted, and what happens is the chips sort of weave themselves together, so this gives us that ADA compliant surface so that, you know, if we just put the chips without compacting them, they'd be obviously sort of-
Kind of loosely.
Imagine, imagine wheels going into that, just dig in and bury themselves. Right. So by compacting the wooden chips, it creates sort of a mat. So now you have the, the wood chips on top, the, the rubber is in ca- is in a, in a pillow-like, uh, material, and so they get all the, the bounce that you have from the ru- the bounce protection you get from the rubber is now covered with chips. So you get sort of best of both.
Without the block.
Without any block.
Thank you. Also wanted to, um, congratulate everyone at the high school who put on the, uh, graduation the other night. It was the first graduation I've attended since nineteen ninety-six, and my brother-in-law graduated on the, on the football field. Um, it was extremely impressive, the whole event, so congratulations to everyone who put it on, but also congratulations to the twenty nineteen, uh, graduating seniors. Looking through that, uh, that program and seeing the schools that these kids are going to, it's absolutely super impressive.
The schools they're going to and the, the scholarships that they've been-
All the money that was given, yeah.
Unreal.
It was, it was pretty impressive.
I had attended a fourth grade prom- promotion ceremony earlier that day in another district, not to be named, that took two hours, put ninety fourth graders through. It was painful.
It was a speech.
It wasn't, it was just a disaster. District to be unnamed.
And finally, I would like to congratulate Kim on becoming a master board member. Thank you very much. We've got a bag. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, okay, um, old business, may I have a motion to proceed with old business? Ms. Conoco, second by Dr. Morthe. Please take roll call.
Of course. Uh, Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Abstain.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Abstain.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes. Now, I'd like to take new business, seventeen A through M. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Mr. Gallo. It's, um, MM. MM, sorry. MM. Um, do you have any comments, questions on any of these items? This is just what we have, um, donations that were given by everyone, right, in this section, so thank you to everyone who you mentioned. Okay. Uh, could you take roll call, please?
Do we get a motion in a second?
Oh, may I, sorry. I have a motion to proceed on that. Mr. Copeland, second. I thought we did.
We did do that. I had the first and I was second.
Yeah. Mr. Wenderkowitz, Mr. Gallo.
Okay. Wenderkowitz motion, Gallo, second.
Yes.
Roll call, Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except on seventeen A, I am abstaining from check number zero nine five four six four, and on seventeen MM, I am abstaining from check number zero nine five six four four.
Thank you. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes. Now, we can proceed to-
Excuse me?
Yes.
Before we proceed, could we break out the retirement of Mary Anne Linsch? Thirty-five years deserves a little bit of special treatment, I think.
Sure, we can do that. That is, do you have the number in front of you, Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Eighteen A. Eighteen A.
All right. So I'd like to proceed seventeen, uh, eighteen B through N, please. I have a motion to proceed on that. Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Ms. Ziccone. Mr. Windrickwitz, second by Ms. Sacco. Any comments on any of those items from any board members? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Windrickwitz.
Yes.
Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes.
And now, could we please take eighteen A? Motion to proceed, Mr. Windrickwitz, second by Ms. Conoco.
As you can see, she was a secretary at Ranford Ridge. That alone should give her a express line to heaven.
Could you please take roll call?
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Windrickwitz.
Yes.
Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, may I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Dr. Morthee, second by Mr. De Silva. Public questions or comments? Note, this section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes.
Evelyn Slakbar, forty-three, Tundet Place. Just two things. First, on Mrs. Blanchett's retirement, I'd just like to say that from the bottom of my heart, I wish her the best because she was the brightest face you could see there whenever you went to the school and, believe me, I've been to the school a lot, so anyway, but I wish her well. And then, uh, just the hardwood surfacing, as far as the maintenance and like, um, uh, the lifespan and, uh, can you elaborate a little bit?
It'll need occasional raking. We're gonna, there'll also be some mats under the wear areas, like at the bottom of the plate, uh, the swing, slides and swings, and, um, and some occasional topping off. So, similar to what we have with the rubber, a little bit more intensive, um, but not too much more intensive, so.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Mike, on that encapsulation of the rubber, what's the warranty on that? How long does that last?
I, I do not know.
Sorry.
But I'm assuming that that lasts quite a while. It's gonna be buried underneath the hardwood for many, many, many years.
Good evening. Megan Charles, Tenscott Top Drive. Before I discuss that, I just want to say, Dr. Shown, thank you for mentioning all the small businesses and I really think that's a, it's a class act, putting it on, you know, shedding it out to everybody and putting it on a list because as a parent volunteer, I am amazed at the amount of money and time and, and just, I mean, really just sheer volume that these small businesses around us that are often struggling themselves give to our schools. My friends in other towns don't have that, so thank you very much.
And Ms. Triantaphilakis deserves a lot of credit for going out and soliciting all those people.
Right.
Because she, she put in a lot of work to, to, to pick that stuff up.
She did.
And she did a great job presenting.
Yes, she did.
Just talking about.
Um, my whole life I've been plagued with, with bug bites. I could go out and I'll just get attacked by like fifty of them. And I come home and I try to ignore it and I scratch them, but inevitably I try to take care of it. And this week, I was, I was too tired and I fell asleep and I scratched and scratched and I just threw a Band-Aid on it and went about my day into work. And at the end of the day, my bug bites were more red and more painful. So, I'm sitting there thinking about that while I'm itching my leg, right? And I'm, I just want to go over the plan with this because I'd like someone to explain to me why this is not a seventy-five thousand dollar Band-Aid. Because my question is, is if this is, if we are, and thank you for realizing that there's an, there's so much concern and it's, we really need hardwood mulch. And I appreciate that. And I believe you said, uh, Mr. Gallo, that it is ADA compliant, the rubber mulch, because it sticks together and it forms that like cushy thing.
No, the rubber mulch is not.
No, I'm saying the rubber, I meant the hardwood on the top. So, my question to you, thank you for, right, my question to you is this. If the hardwood rubber, rubber mulch, sorry, rubber, oh, I'm just saying, the hardwood mulch, the wood, is compacted and meets ADA requirements, then why can't we get rid of the bottom layer that is of such concern to us all? Because to me, even though it has that pillow thing on it, I mean, what's the difference between me throwing a Band-Aid on my leg and, and putting this?
That's giving you the impact attenuation.
Right. If, if we, if we took the hardwood chips and we compacted it to make it ADA compliant, it would be kind of like this floor.
It would be too hard.
Wouldn't be very soft.
Yes.
So, this is, you have, you have the rubber underneath to give the spring and then you have six to eight inches of compacted hardwood chips that, like Mike said, they, they don't become a solid, but they sort of intertwine, they can still move.
Okay.
So, the, so the rubber underneath allows for the spring that you wouldn't have. If you had just rubber or, or just hardwood mulch that wasn't compacted, it wouldn't be ADA compliant.
Okay. And you wouldn't have enough strength. Are there other?
The kids will not have any opportunity to touch or come in contact with the rubber because of that membrane that seals it in and creates that.
Right. They'd have to dig through the compacted chips, rip open the, the, that geo, whatever, to, geotextile, whatever Mike said, to get to the rubber.
Okay. Would we be able to have the actual name of this substance so that we could research it? Because I'm, I'm, what I'm interested in is, even if I put, you describe it as a pillow, well, if I put a pillowcase over something and I shake it enough, then you get the dust, right? That's in the old pillow.
You're not, you're not gonna be shaking the rubber under the ground.
The kids are gonna be jumping on it. So, what I'm saying is, is isn't that gonna come through?
Right. There's gonna be a barrier of six to eight inches, about that much of compacted, compacted hardwood chips.
Okay.
I, I don't see any.
Kid taking the shovel.
Well, no, I don't see any dust coming from the compacted rubber mulch through the fabric and through this much compacted wood chips to get dust in the air.
And it's tensioned. So, imagine if you took, took this material and you put it over something and tensioned it.
And you pulled it tight.
So, you're, the material that's underneath is compacted place.
Right. You're actually compacting the rubber.
Okay. So, so, but this is interesting, this is why I'm asking, because I, it's, you know, you're sitting down here and like, we're gonna put a pillow over it, right? So.
Underneath.
Over, under, tomato, tomato. So, my question to you is, can we find out the name of this membrane?
Sure.
Okay. And then so that we can research, so just a piece of mine too, because Jack plays on it every day, Sam will be there next year.
Megan, the, the membrane is, he's not gonna be touching the mem, all the membrane is, is just a sheet to, to, to pull the, to compact the rubber to keep it tight. The name, the name of the, the name of the fabric, I don't know what it is, but it's irrelevant because nobody's gonna see it, nobody's gonna be able to touch it. It's, it's, it's hardwood chips is, is what the kids are gonna be playing on.
I get it. I totally get that and I appreciate, you know, further explanation, but I just want to make sure it's not out of sight, out of mind.
It's not.
We can't see the rubber, therefore it doesn't exist. And my question is, there were all these concerns about the rubber. The, the, the only other time I spoke here was when I first came and described my experience going down to Betsy Ross last summer. It was the smell. It was the same smell that I, that I remember as a third grader there, you know? So, is the, is the smell still gonna be there?
No.
Is the, is the VOC, is it gonna be, you know, contained in this, whether it's a membrane or a fabric or some type of covering? How do we know that the, that the, it's gonna block all it?
Volatile organic compounds are something when you have a liquid substance that's evaporating.
Okay.
That's not the, that's not what you have.
So, it's gonna contain it?
There, there are no volatile organic compounds that are evaporating from the rubber tires.
Okay, well.
That, that's, that would have been, that would have been a component if we did pour it in place.
Okay.
They bring in a liquid and as that liquid cures, it off gases, those volatile organic compounds come out into the atmosphere. And then, once, once it's cured, then that goes away. That has never been the case here. There's nothing that's evaporating, there's nothing that's going off into the atmosphere.
Because there's a curing of it.
So, that's not a concern.
Okay.
That's not a concern as far as the smell. The, the guy who's, who, who we talked about, you're gonna smell wood chips.
Okay.
You're gonna smell, you said, it smells great, it looks nice, it's easy to walk on, you have that bounce, wheelchairs have no problem. So, yeah, it, it effectively addresses everything that everybody has brought up over the last two, three months.
And I, I understand that it's a, it is a, I'll give you, it's a creative solution because, to, to an issue. Because then you don't have to get rid of it and test it and go through that whole rigmarole because of, there's all these laws in place of getting rid of the rubber.
Which, well, but which is, A, there aren't, there's no testing required anyway. And as far as laws getting rid of rubber, we haven't been told by anybody that there's anything we would need to do other than put it in a dumpster and have it hauled away.
Okay.
So, there, there, that's not an issue. Now, once it gets hauled away, obviously it's going somewhere. We know it doesn't degrade, which is one of the things that's attractive about it, right?
Right.
It lasts for a long time. If we repurpose it as the base for what we're doing, we're not creating a problem someplace else. So, environmentally, it's a great thing to do as well.
Okay.
And it's, and you call it a creative, it's not a, something we created. We're not a unique application of this.
Yeah, we're not that smart.
This is throughout northern New Jersey.
Right. No, but I, when I was listening to it, I was like, from the outside, that's a really creative thing, but I want to know that it's, you know, we didn't just put, as I said, we didn't just put a Band-Aid, a really thick six to eight inch wooden Band-Aid on it. You know what I'm saying? That's what I just want to make sure.
That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a financially prudent thing for this board to decide to do and it's not something that's gonna happen.
Okay.
It, it's not something we're gonna slap a sticker on and call it good. We actually put a lot more thought into it than that.
Oh, I get that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And you'll have the, you have the, this fabric or the membrane, we'll get, if I can just email it from you?
Yeah, could.
Okay.
I mean, I.
So, there's not gonna be a testing done or anything like that?
You know, the fabric that people put in their gardens to suppress weeds, put the water flows through it? It's a material similar to that.
It'll be similar to that.
Right.
It's not anything special. It's not, there's no magic to it.
That's what I was wondering about, but if, if things go through it, then can't things come through it the other way?
Well, it's permeable in one direction.
Right, it's permeable.
If something's permeable in one direction, it's gonna be permeable.
It's, it's permeable.
No gravity will not allow it to rise up.
Right. But I'm just saying like, you know, kids like step on it.
If it rains, if it rains, water's gonna go through it. There's not anything, there's no pressure, there's nothing gonna be coming back up through it.
There's no wicking or anything like that.
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
Any other questions this evening? Come on up.
Laura Ferinski, fifty-one, Malcolm Road. I'm sure you're sick of seeing me. My daughter hasn't even started kindergarten, starting in the fall, so I'm glad that this will be taking place. This is new, this just comes as a shock to all of us what this is, because we haven't